So I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Deerfield Planning Board on February 6, 2023, 6:30 PM, hybrid fashion. And Denise, if you could read our introduction.
This meeting will be held in hybrid fashion with the opportunity for both in-person attendance and remote participation in accordance with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, which extended the Governor's March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, MGL 300A, until March 31, 2023. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in any specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance according for purposes of in-person attendance. The town of Deerfield will host the meeting in the main meeting room of the Deerfield Municipal Offices with remote participation. Details noted below.
Thank you, Denise. We will be having a little bit of a change up with some of our agenda this morning, or this morning at the beginning of our meeting, as we're pleased to have Lisa meet our town council attend and wanted her to be present for a couple of the agenda items. A reminder for during all the meetings, certainly in particular during our public hearing, that we all want to speak one at a time, follow our Deerfield Code of Conduct, to be respectful, considerate, courteous, and also important tonight, concise, non-repetitive, recognized by the Chair. We do have, as many of you have seen, a fairly full agenda, so the concise and non-repetitive is helpful. We also, since we are having a two separate public hearings this evening, we wanted to, during our public hearings, reiterate the Select Board's anti-hate statement, which has been adopted by the Select Board, but then now is being adopted by a number of different committees. And I think it certainly does pertain to the Planning Board, so Denise could also read that.
The Deerfield Planning Board supports the Deerfield Select Board's anti-hate statement of November 11, 2022. We unequivocally condemn racism, discrimination, and hate in all of its forms, and we commit to working diligently to ensure that our town is welcoming and safe for everyone. As elected leaders, we recognize our responsibility to understand and address all racial inequality, racial inequality. We will encourage diversity of voices and representation on Deerfield towards boards and committees. We pledge to help foster community where individuals can live happy, happily, free of fear, and with equal access to opportunities regardless of race, religion, ethnic background, national origin, ability, gender, identity, or sexual orientation.
Thank you. Thank you. Board members in attendance, Rachel Blaine.
Rachel Blaine, present.
Kathy Sylvester. Kathy Witroba.
Kathy Witroba here.
Emily Gaylord.
Emily Gaylord, present.
Andrea Liebson.
Andrea Liebson here.
And Denise Mason.
Present.
Thank you. Our minutes, I know Rachel did just send some today, but they've not yet been distributed, so definitely for our next meeting, we will have December, January, and then tonight's meeting. So, thank you in advance, Rachel. So, to begin, we will begin with the issue of the condominiums at Sugarloaf. Again, I will be recusing myself as in the butter and passing the Chair responsibilities over to my Vice Chair, Denise.
Okay, thanks, Emily. All right. We received a response from Mr. Whitman from Regus LLC in response to Mr. Peters' concerns. It appears that Regus LLC has satisfied all requirements and answered all questions. Do you have anything to add, Mr. Whitman?
Yeah.
Okay. Planning Board members, are you satisfied with the information provided?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to approve a certificate of completion and authorize me to sign it on behalf of the Planning Board?
I think I all moved that. I was on the board at the time. So, it seems very appropriate. I think I'm the only one that's on that time.
Second it, Kathy.
Okay, so take a vote. All in favor? Rachel Blaine?
Rachel Blaine, yes.
Kathy Witroba?
Kathy Witroba, yes.
Andrea Liebson?
Andrea Liebson, yes.
Emily Gaylord?
Emily Gaylord, yes.
Annalee Wolfhold?
I'm saying.
You're recusing yourself. Kathy Sylvester?
Kathy Sylvester.
And Denise Mason, yes.
All right, thank you.
Yes, that's.
Put the letter together, and are we able to use that word that the engineer suggested?
To my, the best of my knowledge, yes. And that would be a question for Lisa made. Lisa, are we able to use the wording that the engineer, that Tony suggested?
Um, yeah, I think that, Madam Chair, Madam Chair Pro Tem, I will, I'll draft something for your review. I understand what the request was, but we certainly have an appropriate certificate of completion for you to execute.
Okay. Thank you.
And also, I'd like to thank everyone's participation. This has gone on a number of times, and meetings, and I also am glad that we've had good participation from the community. We're always looking for residents' input, and thank you for your respectful comments. I believe a lot of this has been posted already.
Yes. If there are any, you know, any questions after, it's like, you didn't, there are no questions right now because it's not a public hearing, but information will be posted online, and I'm sure you can talk to Mr. St. Peter. Don't know all the information. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll move forward to our opening public hearing for our accessory apartment bylaws, and.
I'm, I'm sorry. The legal notice, it was posted for 7:00 PM. This, of course, happened two weeks ago. It could not be changed, so I don't know that you can talk about anything before 7:00 PM.
Oh, that was before it was changed to 6:30?
Yes, that, I had to post that two weeks ago, so that is not changeable.
Oh, fooling, sort of. Okay, then, we will return to that. Amy, was the accessory dwelling posted for 7:00, or could that be 6:30?
Yes, it was posted for 7:00 because that's when we had planned for the meeting to start.
As was Bash.
Yes, everything is posted for 7:00.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
This is Town Council. I think that, as you know, I have to go to another meeting. And so, I, can I just, I think that I can give you a comment related to the accessory dwelling, and then you can have your public hearing incorporate what I'm going to tell you into your public hearing.
Thank you.
Does that work for you?
Please, please.
So, as you know, you have the draft that we made comments on, and I believe that Kathy had adopted almost all of the changes. There was one item that I still had a question about that she also had a question about, and that had to do within your definition section. You define principal dwelling. It's built, right, a building providing the principal use for the lot on which it is located, residentially zoned lot, such a building would be a dwelling. And that, that conflicts, kind of, with the definition in the zoning bylaw generally of principal building use or structure, where it allows more than one principal building or use on a lot. And so, the way you've got it drafted, it sounds like that if there's an accessory dwelling, then there can only be one principal use. So, I just, there needs to be resolution between the conflict between the principal dwelling as it is defined in the accessory apartment bylaw and the definition in the zoning bylaw generally.
And what would you suggest that wording become then in the definition section of our bylaw?
Well, I, I would, you, if that's what you want, that if the accessory apartment is on a lot in a dwelling, and you're only allowed to have one principal use, then you need to say for the purposes of this section. But if what you're actually doing is just saying that, if you're saying that it's the same thing in the general bylaw, then you don't need a definition at all, right? Because the definition in the general bylaw shall mean, it says, shall mean any building or structure containing a principal use, and then it refers to the use table, except for such use as a home occupation. Where more than one principal use is conducted on a lot, and such uses are in more than one building or structure, each building or structure shall be considered a principal building or structure. So I guess I'm not sure what the intent is of the board here, but if you don't, Kathy wants to say something. I can see her coming up to, so I, we just have to clean it up.
Thank you. I, I think that, you know, the intent is, you know, the principal dwelling being the homeowner's initial home, and then there's the accessory dwelling, right? So, I am not quite sure how to clean it up. Maybe you and I can work on that.
Yeah, so that, yeah, I don't, I don't think it's a problem. I just think it needs to be straightened out. And I think that the idea is that if there's a house on a lot, that's a principal dwelling, and that's okay. And in the principal dwelling, you can have an accessory apartment, right? And so, I just want the board to be sure that, let's say, let's say you have another principal use on the lot. Let's say you have a dwelling, and you have, I don't know, a feed store on the lot, right? And that's also a principal use in a different building. Are you, do you want to prevent the principal dwelling from not having an accessory apartment in that instance where there's more than one use?
No, I mean, the principal dwelling being the homeowner's home.
Right.
An accessory dwelling, but the feed store could not.
Correct. Right? So, a building providing the principal use. So, so in your definition, maybe you say a building providing the principal residential use for the lot on which it is located.
Okay, that, that's.
How's that?
That sounds, yeah, very good. Thank you.
Otherwise, you all have adopted everything else I've recommended, and I have no further comments on the bylaw.
Thank you.
Okay, so then we will return at 7:00 for the accessory apartment public hearing, and then sunny days. So, we will move forward then to some other pieces of our agenda. This one, the appointment for the Library Building Committee. One of the things that the Planning Board has been working with is, in the town bylaws, it states that Planning Board needs to be apprised of and involved with plans for municipal building changes. And at the last town meeting, we were all wondering, how can we opine on such changes if, in fact, we haven't really been given a lot of background information? And so, I brought this forward to our CCI Connecting Communities Initiative meeting, which has representatives from essentially all of the boards and committees in the town, and we had a, I think, a very fruitful discussion there with part of the conclusion being that many members of the Planning Board have, in fact, been either appointed or are on other boards and committees. And so, twofold, one, to make sure that we're on the appropriate committees, and secondly, when we have in our section of our agenda that we're having committee reports, that we actually speak in as much detail as needed, both at the respective committees as well as in our committee to apprise the Planning Board of what's going on with some of these other activities and other boards. And what came about in that last CCI meeting, in fact, was that the library now has a building committee, and that it would certainly make sense for there to be a Planning Board representative on the Library Building Committee. So, I spoke some with.
Candice.
Yes, Jim Candice. He did mention at the last Library Building Committee meeting this week, there was some discussion about this, but there was really no resolution. He was under the assumption or the impression that several leaders on the Building Committee would take the issue to the Select Board under the assumption that the Select Board is the body that makes appointments to something such as the Building Committee, not the Planning Board that would make appointments. And I have to thank and acknowledge Denise, who is involved in a lot of, of the town campus discussions right now, who has volunteered to be the potential Planning Board, potential Planning Board representative. So, I think the next thing might be, it seems that the, there's a question, again, as to whether or not the Building Committee leaders would be coming to the Select Board, maybe even this Wednesday, to discuss this or request an appointment. And so, maybe for the Planning Board to send a respectful request letter to the Select Board, or somebody needs to make sure that it's happening. I'm not certain that it's happening, Denise.
I don't think it's really necessary, necessary to do that, considering that the Select Board is on CCI, and I think we did discuss that. And there is, I'm happy to do that because I am very involved in all the buildings in town. And I mean, unless someone wants to fight me for it, I'm happy to do it. So, yeah, and I'll attend, I'll probably attend the Select Board meeting anyway on Wednesday, you know, maybe via Zoom. So I'll mention that. But I, I think it's a really good idea to have multiple people on the board because considering that it is for the town, it's, you know, it's, the library is part of the town. It's not.
Right. It's just making sure that it comes up on the agenda for the Select Board on Wednesday. That would be the reason for sending a letter.
Well, I think, I think the agenda is already out for the Select Board. I didn't see whether it's on that.
It's not.
Well, that could be under, you know, unanticipated.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
You'll take it under your wing to.
I will.
Request.
Yes, I will.
Excellent.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
Some letters?
Yes.
Question?
We usually, well, it's. We often do have public comments at the end, but thank you for returning. So, if you have a question, sure, go. No, 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 no. Would you like?
Yes.
Oh, there, she's beckoning.
No, you can ask questions.
In general, with our public comments, we do have our request that you certainly state your name, address, try to limit your comments to two minutes, and. I'm sorry.
Procedural questions.
Yes. Oh, procedural questions.
Could you come up to the microphone?
And it may be, in fact, if they are procedural questions, that something, we may, we need to get back to you on, and in general, that's often what we will do is.
They're pretty general. And there's one specific question on this project. What's a letter of Paula O'Brien?
Directly into.
Paula O'Brien, can you hear me?
Can you pull the microphone, speak directly into it, because it's really difficult for.
Paula O'Brien, 7A.
Identify yourself and your address.
7A Gray Lockley. Okay. Once a letter of completion of the site plan permit and the stormwater permit is issued, is the applicant, are applicants responsible for recording at the Hampshire County Registry of Deeds? And in the Sugarloaf case, would they record the letter of completion for the condominiums or your letter of compliance? Would they also record the peer review letter from Sarah Cummings, the as-built, and the future's lots?
I think that to give a definitive answer to this and any other questions you have, we will probably need to really check the, the protocol and the bylaws.
And Denise, okay. And under the stormwater regulations for the town of Deerfield, it says that if as-built drawings are required, they have to be recorded at the registry, and I'm wondering if the 102822 final plan has been recorded. Do you, do you know that?
No, but we will answer all of these questions.
You know, what would be very helpful is if you just send the questions, send them in writing.
Oh, you don't? Okay.
No, because, you know, we, we could, first of all, it's not a public hearing, so we're, you know, it's really not an exchange. You, you ask the questions, we give you answers because some of them we don't have the answers to. So I think it would be extremely helpful if you could just write down all your questions and send.
I can leave this with you.
Send them to the.
I can leave this with you tonight. Did the Planning Board receive, and this is the last one that pertains specifically to this, and did the Planning Board receive this, the signed professional verification that the stormwater management system had been flushed of siltation in the concrete debris?
I, I think a lot of these will be answered because there was a letter, Mr. St. Peter had asked many different questions, and Mr. Whitman answered all of those questions and has, also has proof to, to show that he has answered all those questions. So that will be up.
I was looking, I was unable to make the last meeting, and what I did was I went through the tape, and it said that he was supposed to get some verification or something.
Okay, all of that will be posted on our website, and I'm just not sure. I'll have to ask Amy when she'll post that, because when we get things in, we post everything on the website.
Yeah, I didn't see it.
I don't think it's up there yet.
That isn't up there, and nothing beyond 1028 was up there. Okay, great.
And it would be helpful if you could send, you know, send those questions in, if, if they're not answered, on the website. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks.
Thank you.
I'll take them.
Thank you.
Oh, oh, you got them. Perfect.
Thank you very much.
Did you have her name?
Okay, then, moving forward with our, seven more minutes of our agenda before our public hearings, a number of different boards and committees are sending requests to our state representatives, Senator, to request that remote participation in meetings can continue. A draft of a letter from the Planning Board was sent out to all of you, and then since then, I've sort of revised the draft, bringing forward two points, one being that, of course, COVID is still around, it's still is a public health problem, and we really feel that it's in the public health interest to continue with remote participation. The other piece that I wanted to bring forward is that sort of an unintended consequence of remote meetings is just significantly greater public participation. I mean, look at all the people on Zoom right now that may or may not have been participating at all if they couldn't come to Zoom. And it certainly seems, as I've talked with a number of people in many committees, that, you know, not only would we like to have this open meeting law provision extended, but actually codified and made possible on an ongoing basis. So that's the letter that I'm asking the Board. If there's anything else we should include, or if that sounds good, we'll send it off. Andrea?
I would suggest that they are looked at carefully because the letter, there's some confusion about the.
Yeah.
Salutation.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, oh, I was just, I was just going to make one other comment. I think what's really nice is certainly when we have our CCI meetings, there, you know, could be 15 people on, and I find it's difficult sometimes just sitting and looking down and for people to be recognized. So, it's sort of nice when you have Zoom meeting, when you have that many people, unless we can change the configuration here, which is difficult just because of what we have to work with.
Also acoustics.
Yes.
Yeah. Kathy, did you have a suggestion?
I, I wouldn't want to just mention COVID either, because people who might be disabled will not be able to come for variety of reasons, or they have small children at home. So there's lots of other reasons besides COVID. So, COVID did us a favor in one aspect here.
Right. Excellent. Okay.
I'd also say that.
Yes, Rachel?
Public Access, we're not here on Public Access TV. So, we did have a lot of people who watch Public Access, and this is now really taking the place of Public Access TV, which is different than being participatory, but it does give citizens an opportunity to listen in and, if not participate, certainly listen to what the issues are. So, I, I suspect that that's kind of a swap-out, too, given the way media is at this point, just people don't even necessarily have cable TV anymore, but they still have their computers.
Right, but you can watch it actual. I mean, that was the thing.
Planning Board is supportive of us sending these to Governor Healy and everyone else we know. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. I don't think we need to vote on that. Okay, let's see. Do we have any committee reports? Oh, yes. Andrea leads Open Space and Creation.
Yes, the Open Space Committee members, of the majority of us, have been attending a webinar offered by Mass Trails, which talks about open space plans and then a variety of things. So, it's four-week series each Thursday at noon, and we are learning interesting, important things through it. So, we are all attending that.
So, say it again. So, it's.
Mass Trails webinar.
A webinar.
Okay, and you'll let us know if there's anything in particular that might pertain to our Planning Board issue.
We will.
Thank you. Now, any other committee or board updates, or webinars, or education?
I have a few. I think we've got two minutes. It'll be fast. Okay. I went with the Select Board to the Mass Municipal Association Meetings Conference in Boston, and actually, it was, it was really interesting. There were 1,200 people, so I didn't really meet too many of them. But, but what was great is that we did have an opportunity. We heard more Healy speak. We also heard Kim Driscoll, and they both stated that they're not going to forget Western Mass. So, both, Carolyn Ness and I had an opportunity. Carolyn gave, Kim Driscoll, who's a Lieutenant Governor, gave her the card and talked about coming out to Deerfield. I also handed her one of our postcards from Connecting Community Initiative, talking about the campus and everything that we're trying to achieve downtown, and invited her as well. So, I think Mr. Hillchi from the Select Board will be writing letters to invite them out. But they're supposed to be visiting every one of the, how many towns do we have? 341? So, something like that. So, that, that was really, that was really interesting. One other thing, actually, two other things. We also had representatives from, oh, boy, from Mass Development come out to talk about funding. We're putting, putting, asking for some funding for some of the buildings. So, they've been very responsive and has, they've come out personally to do site visits. And then also, there's another one, complete, oh, I'm sorry, complete neighborhoods? Complete neighborhoods. So, we are getting some, we are getting some funding to have. some public, public meetings to talk about what's happening in the center of town. So that'll be coming up, so just stay tuned to that, but there's a lot going on. Okay, two minutes at seven o'clock.
Any other committee or, or webinar reports? Okay, thank you. Good, good things. So, uh, let's see. I will open the public hearing for our accessory apartment bylaws, since we already got, got started on that a little bit.
Sure.
Public notice.
Notice is hereby given that the Deerfield Planning Board will hold a public hearing pursuant to general law, chapter 40A, section five, on Monday, February 6, 2023, at 7:00 PM for a proposed amendment to Deerfield zoning bylaws, chapter 179, replacing section 2244 in its entirety with a new section, 3,900 accessory apartments, including 3910 purpose, 3920 definitions, 3930 accessory apartment standards, 3940 application procedure, 3950 transfer of ownership of a dwelling with an accessory apartment, 3960 termination of accessory apartment use, 2230 use regulation. Full text of proposed articles is available for review in the foyer of the municipal offices, 8 Conway Street, South Deerfield, and online at www.deerfieldma.us in the calendar event.
Thank you. Um, our process for public hearing for this, as well as the, uh, the next one on sunny days, is that, um, the, uh, there will be a, an explanation about the issue at hand. The board may then ask some questions of the person who is presenting the, um, the overview. Then there is an opportunity for public comment. Again, as we've mentioned before, um, trying to have the comments be respectful, obviously one at a time, uh, two to three minutes each. And, uh, please identify your name and, uh, street address. And then there would be closing statements by the applicant. And the planning board then could come to agreement as to whether or not to close the public hearing. Uh, a, um, sort of a highlight also mentioning that during the public comment period, as we were mentioning earlier, um, it's not a time for back and forth between the planning board and the public. It's an opportunity for the public to present their questions and concerns. And then during planning board discussion, we will, um, address some of the, the questions or concerns that, um, were brought forward. The public hearing then can either be closed or continued. And, uh, and then we'll kind of take it from, from there in terms of what's happening next. So, um, and for the, uh, accessory apartments, Kathy Sylvester has been doing really a yeoman's job with, um, working for many months on this. So I'm going to turn this over to Kathy to, uh, introduce and monitor.
Thank you, Anna Lee. So this bylaw's been in process for a couple of years, Rachel, or more? I'm not sure, I came in a year ago on this project. And sometime last spring, we formed a subcommittee, which consisted of members of the Finance Committee, the ZBA Select Board, Bob Walden, the Building Inspector, Chris Curtis as our consultant, a resident, and, uh, two planning board members, Rachel Blaine and myself. So we also consulted with the DPEW regarding the sewer in town and how that would be affected. Police Chief Pachorick about parking issues, Peggy Sloan from Furcog, other towns and their process and experience, uh, with ADUs as well as, um, our town council. So major points is we're trying to provide homeowners means of obtaining additional income, companionship services, enabling them to stay more comfortably in their home or neighborhoods, trying to increase housing inventory, protect property values and residential character of existing neighborhoods, legalize conversions in compliance with building codes. We have discussed the size of ADUs and came up with the size of 900 square feet or less. So that kind of is the overview of some of the work that brought us to this point. I think we have a pretty good final draft. And so we're welcoming, um, your comments this time. Thank you, Rachel.
I just add that we also made a quick stop at the assessors, um, met with them and talked to them about, um, how the addition of an ADU would in fact, um, improve their home and therefore probably increase their assessment potentially or not. They were very open to that as, as if you make an improvement to a home. But anyway, that was another stop that we made, just that there's no particular, the value of your home is not increased by the amount of money that you can make from it. That was a very important principle that we did discover there. And, um, that might be something people would like to hear about going forward.
That's good. Let's see, um, we have one member of the public still here in attendance and then quite a few people online. So maybe we'll start with, um, our, our gentleman, if you have a comment. And then we'll sort of figure out with, um, Kathy, maybe you can be the one to just call people as you see them lining up.
And you're, Denise is our timekeeper, so.
I'll be brief, I promise. Hi, thank you all. My name is Matt Morobek. I live at 23 Juniper Drive with my wife and our young son. He'll be two in about a month. I came to the meeting just to speak out in support of this proposal. We love our house, uh, we love where we live. We have a lovely plot of land, but a very small house. Uh, my mother's a social worker who retired about two years ago and is in her early seventies. She loves spending time with our son and we love having her for daycare. There's very little daycare available out there in the world. I don't know if anyone has been shopping for daycare lately, it is impossible. Uh, very good. So, uh, yes, you, you probably have about a one, one year more wait if you got on the list. If you have a three-year-old now, uh, you'll, you'll get your kid into daycare just before preschool starts. So, um, we've been very lucky to have support from, uh, our son's grandmother, my mom, um, coming up and down, but we just don't have the room to house her. And so the ability to build a small structure on our property, we have plenty of space for it on the land, but no place to put it on our existing house. So this would be a tremendous help for, for my family and I. You know, we've, we've explored some of the options for, you know, how we would do it and, you know, doing it the right way. We're not interested in it from a revenue generating standpoint, just from, uh, being able to, uh, both support my mom as she ages and have her support my son and get the family closer together. So I just wanted to speak in support of it. Thank you all for, for all you're doing on it. I really hope it moves forward. Thanks.
Anybody online that has question? Is this Mr. Cunningham? Want to unmute?
Uh, I have comments. I don't know if that's what you're asking, but questions.
Comments are invited, yes.
Oh, thank you. It's John Cunningham. My current address is 45 Oakwood Circle in Amherst, but I'm the owner of parcel B of 94 Sugarloaf Street, which is a building lot, and I hope to build an accessory apartment with my primary dwelling. I have two comments. My first pertains to the definition of an ADU or accessory apartment in 3920 and specifically lowercase i, lowercase i, two, I guess it is, versus the standard you have in item six and seven of 3934. I'm, I'm trying to add additional flexibility here to people making accessory apartments in that there's a difference between increasing, limiting it to 900 square feet versus increasing the area of the build by 900 square feet. Because you could, you could add 900 square feet, but allocate 1,200 square feet to the accessory apartment by using some of the existing primary dwelling and rededicating it. So my suggestion is that that little double I, uh, read more like, uh, six and seven, saying that it has no more than two bedrooms and does not increase the floor area or volume of the original building by more than 900 square feet. In other words, the building area can get bigger by 900 square feet, but perhaps the accessory apartment can be 1,100 or 1,200 or something. It'd still be limited to two bedrooms, which will functionally keep it in check. My second comment has to do with, standard five in 3934, where you have the separate entrance shall be located on the side or the rear of the building, or et cetera, et cetera. I'm not sure why you would eliminate a tasteful entrance on the front of a building for an accessory apartment. And I wish you would consider just saying it should have a separate entrance. Or if it's a common entrance, it would have this hallway business. It's nice to have it on the side, it's nice to have it in the rear, but if it's tastefully done, it's nice to also be able to put it in the front. Those conclude my comments, and I really appreciate you folks going ahead with this. I hope it has a positive outcome, self-interest. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? I don't see anymore.
So we've had two interesting suggestions, which, excuse me, sorry. In general, as you saw earlier in the meeting, um, since this is a town bylaw proposal, we've had our town council review, uh, any changes that we might have. So I think potentially, um, maybe if there's no other comments right now, we could, um, close the public hearing.
It's, except we haven't talked to the attorney about
Right.
changes.
Right, but then what we could, would, I believe what the process would be, we close the public hearing, we'd have some discussion, we may not have any changes. If we do have potential, oh.
Can we not, can we not have a conversation without having closed?
Yes, we can. Sure, and then, and then we still would have a continuation of the public hearing. Town council looks at whatever decisions we make. And then, uh, we would, uh, have more discussion next. You mean, is that correct?
No, we could do that. So, um, I am going to confess, I don't really understand the first comment about the 1,100 square feet versus 900 in the ADU. So maybe someone here can help.
I think that the recommendation was rather than just saying it can't be more, an addition of 900, say that you can't increase the floor plan of your existing dwelling by more than 900 square feet. Because if someone added a 900 square foot, they could potentially then allocate more than 900 square feet to the ADU, I think is the clarification they're looking for.
He's shaking his head, yes, so that sounds, that looks like they got it.
Kathy, um, you want to tell us the history or the reason why 900 square feet has been indicated?
So there, there was a lot of discussion about size. And according to, and if I can find the paper, um, the state, if you want to pass this by simple majority, um, you can say, um, let me find the wording here. That basically it would, I don't think this is it here.
So may I, this is Andrea, may I clarify? The, these bylaws would need to be presented at annual town meeting.
That's right, but.
And so we are trying to, um, clarify and codify what the state has told us we could do. Maybe not the state has told us, but the state, um, regulations precedent have, have indicated.
Well, we've kind of gone a little astray from that because the state says you can get a simple majority vote if you vote that the ADU would be no more than half the size of the principal dwelling or 900 square feet, whichever is less. We opted to say just 900 square feet because some of the homes in the community in the central district are 1,200 square feet. So a 600 square foot ADU is just a little on the small side. So we went with 900 and we're going to hope for a two-thirds majority vote. There was a lot of discussion, should we go to 1,200? It just seemed that we're trying to have a start here. We may end up changing it in two or three years, but we need to get somewhere where the town as a whole can support this. And I think we're trying to make it, um, something that people would support. And so when you go into larger square footage, you're going to get more pushback. I think there's going to be more problems with that. I understand what Mr. Cunningham's saying, though. Where you're just saying if you're enlarging the footprint, it could be no more than 900 square feet, but there is nothing in the bylaw that says you can't use part of the original building as, uh, part of the ADU, as far as I can, as far as I read it. I, I don't see that.
Well.
Can we let him say?
Sure.
Yeah, go up right ahead.
I would agree if it weren't for the definition, little i, little i, which says is not larger in floor area than 900 square feet.
I see what you're saying, yeah, I get it. Well, that's a problem.
It's very, it varies. I mean, and we did try to make it simple. That was part of that.
Trying to make it simple.
Simple. And not tie people's hands, but.
Also not change the character. This is Rachel. So we're, in, in doing, uh, something fairly straightforward and simple, like it's not larger than 900 square feet. That was, that seemed better than the various, um, formulas.
They're adding caveats and it gets confusing, yeah.
Excluding unfinished attic and basement. So, I mean, that was a little, that's a little bit more, but I think we just felt like there was a straightforward nature to this. And, uh, Mr. Cunningham did present this, so we were, we did have this in mind and his, his proposal is very reasonable. So that's, um, that, that is, it's in conflict is what we're thinking about. But honestly, we also don't want to open something up that we don't understand what will happen if we change the nature of certain neighborhoods, right? So, um, you're adding more than 900 square feet. We just don't know how people are going to, to take this and run with it. And this was a very modest proposal for the beginning of it. And I think that's what Kathy's pointing to, that it seemed like, hmm, a good start. Is 1,200 a better size? Is 1,200 a really large size to add on to a really small, you know, house? That isn't, that's barely 1,200 square feet itself already. So we were, we were concerned that we didn't want to make so many, uh, multiple categories that it would just be onerous, uh, for people to use. Perhaps we, you know, we could look at a special permitting. That's another possibility for a larger, for, for change, but that there would be no increase other than the 900, just to start, because that's, feels like it's a very reasonable amount of space.
And I think we're also just trying to increase housing inventory, help people stay in their homes. We can come up with a lot of different caveats for individual situations, but then the bylaw would get very onerous. I think we need to make, keep it simple. Um, and, and to write it to the intent of the bylaw, which.
And not to create a, um, two-family dwellings, but that's a very different
Right.
beast. And the way our regulations are now, there are only, yeah, multiple family dwellings are fairly regulated in our town. It's hard to do, and we might look at that again too. But that's, that's a whole, treading into a whole another pond.
Which then brings up the, uh, the entrance. And what makes it, uh, two-family different than, uh, single-family with an ADU? One of those things was the entrance because you wanted to look like a single-family home and keeping with the neighborhood. Um, and that was part of that reason for that. So you can always, if you're building fresh, brand new. And that was part of that reason for that. So you can always, if you're building fresh, brand new, as Mr. Cunningham is doing, you may have a single entrance that leads to two different you know, dwellings, but there's only one entrance at the front of the building. And that's pretty standard in all the towns that we surveyed.
Well, and also that's always occupied by the homeowner. Right?
Only one unit can be rented. Yeah, you need to use the mic though.
But in that, sorry, it's Kathy, but in that home, you're, you're, one of the areas that's being occupied is the owner of the property.
One area has to be the owner and yeah, that's right.
To avoid that two-family
Right, yeah.
It's not two separate families. It's always gonna be owned by the, it's always gonna be occupied by the homeowner.
One, one section, yes, right. Anybody else have any comments?
The first comment? No, I guess that was, no, just
Was, that was just in support, so I go for that.
Yeah. Well, we don't have a stand-alone. So that is a difference. And that, that's another, that's the next level, right? We're not California yet.
What do you mean standalone?
Special permit. A special permit, yeah.
So does it sound as if we're not inclined to make
I'm not inclined to make any changes because I think you get into a bag of worms with all these. Yeah, I mean, I think we are meeting the intent of the bylaw the way it's written. If you want to build a two-family, that's another issue.
I mean, I think as you said before, someone said before, you know, this we do a bylaw and then you test it. I mean, we're trying to do the bylaw as, to be as perfect as possible, but nothing, nothing is ever perfect. So something may come up two, you know, two years from now, three years from now, we take it back and revise the bylaw. But I mean, you know, there has to be a start, so I think as Kathy said, we can keep talking about this for, you know, however many more years, but you know, we, we have a housing, we've got a housing problem. We've got a childcare problem. We're an aging community and people are having a real difficult time staying in their homes and, and even more difficult time trying to then buy back into the, into Deerfield because you can't find anything that's livable for less than three hundred thousand dollars. And a lot of people just can't afford that. So you know, it's another good reason for accessory dwellings. You know, keep our families together. So, my comment.
Thank you Denise. I, I'm good with.
Without the motions to close.
Can I make a motion to close? Does it have to be somebody?
Any changes.
Right, so can I make that motion to close public comment? Or does it have to be somebody else?
I moved close public comment.
Thank you. We have a second.
Second, Andrea.
We have a vote. Rachel?
So we're closing public, the public hearing?
Comment.
Just a comment.
For this meeting.
We're not closing public hearing.
I think it's
It's a public hearing that we're closing, actually.
Yeah, that's what I think.
I'm sorry, it's not common.
Closing the public hearing.
Yes.
And at, at which point then we would be potentially moving this on to be placed on the warrant.
So don't we first have to vote to to vote to close public hearing, Rachel?
Yeah, I mean, we haven't had a lot of public.
No, we haven't.
And my problem with that, I agree. I, I mean, I feel like it's great to move it, move it along, but I think all the questions that we came up, you know, that we were addressing are gonna come up in the town meeting. Now, maybe that's fine, maybe that's but it would be nice to have those questions come up before town meetings so that there were
I know.
Anyway, sure.
I did advertise on public on social media. It was posted.
Right, so may I, may I ask, I, I would like to ask a question, please. This is Andrea. Right now, we would, we are talking about changing the wording of the bylaw draft under thirty-nine, twenty, to say building providing the principal residential use for the lot as it is, on which is located. And that is, those are the, that's the only change we are proposing at this point.
Right. So Rachel, are you suggesting we hold this over?
I'm just saying if we hold it for one more public hearing, we, we continue it until our March meeting, then there's no skin off anybody's nose, I think. Then we close it there and we, we decide, and that way people can mull it over a little bit more. I don't know, it just feels very precipitous to do that. I'm so conservative. I just
Well, we have the space to do it, you know, like we have.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah. You, you also have a lot more experience.
Well.
I'm just like moving along, it's just
Still like a twenty-minute public hearing.
Exactly.
I have a suggestion. Hey, Mr. Larrabee, maybe you would include that in your article in the paper in large font, please. Come to the public hearing, the continuation for next month. Most people read the recorder. If not, tell your neighbors, tell them to come to our hearing.
If they have these concerns.
Okay, so we can vote to continue the
That we continue the public hearing till our March eighth meeting. Sixth, oh right, it's one of those funny months. March sixth meeting, at which point we can pick this up again and
Do you have a second?
Andrea, second.
Okay, those in favor, Rachel?
Look at her. Yes.
Kathy?
Kathy Witroba, yes.
Andrea?
Andrew Leibson, yes.
Emily G. Lord, yes.
Emily Wolf, yes.
Denise Mason, yes.
Kathy Sylvester, yes.
Thank you.
To be continued. And now we have our goodness, continuation of our Vesh veterinary parking lot and CT scan for cats building. Thank you very much. So the continuation as a reminder that we did have the determine that we wanted to have Berkshire Designs or it was determined that Berkshire Designs would be the peer reviewer. Since then, Vesh did make an adjustment to their site plan review proposal that was included and sent off to Berkshire Design. And so tonight Berkshire Design is speaking to the peer review. And the, the formal letter of the peer review draft at this time was just distributed today, so and I understand from the applicant that in fact there's some outstanding issues, so in fact we may be having a continuation with that as well, but Mr. Furman, if you'd like to move forward and then I'm not sure who's here from Berkshire Design.
Here Lucy Conley.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening, everybody. I'm John Furman. I'm the office manager for VHB in Springfield. And that was a, a great summary of where we've been on this project. We had received some preliminary comments from, from Lucy. We addressed them and sent her and Berkshire Designs updated plans. And with that, they were able to finalize their review, which is the formal review that was sent to Amy, I believe, on Thursday. From there, we worked, we updated the plans, we addressed all the comments we could, and then Friday night at like seven-thirty, we sent out three emails to Berkshire Design and to Amy with the site plans, updated stormwater management report, a response to comments and a traffic. So Friday at seven-thirty, I'm sure all of you were hanging around waiting to see that come in and review it. So we fully expect that we're, we will be continued. As the chair had alluded to, there are items that we have not addressed at this point, only because we, we just didn't have time. And there are items on the, the, the second review forum that Lucy has issued that are basically just for consideration of the board. So for the item that hasn't been updated, it's the lighting plan. And that started off with, we had a lighting plan which we submitted, which the board has seen. And we were having difficulty getting the lighting designer to update that to the current layout. That lighting plan actually had the building addition on it and the building addition had boullard lights in front. It was kind of skewing the layout. So we submitted it just so we could get the application complete, fully thinking that by the time we had peer review comments, we'd have an updated lighting plan, but that didn't materialize. So we, that, that is the one outstanding item that we have. We've sent that and the current bylaw for lighting design to the site electrician who is in, in charge of getting that lighting plant up to date. So we expect that it'll take him a week or so to get that up to date, and as soon as we get that, we will forward that to to Berkshire Design and to Amy, and just to kind of keep the file going. I believe the, the rest of the comments that were on Lucy's review that came out today were basically for consideration for the board and to get direction. One of them is landscaping, and when we met on site, that was one of the questions for landscaping and if we were going to do anything. We, we've elected not to do any landscaping on the site, and for anyone that's been to that site during operating hours, you will know that the landscaping means absolutely nothing to the people that go there. The parking lot is so small, they'll park on bushes, they'll park on the lawn, they'll park everywhere. The parking expansion is designed so that as you get to the edge of the curb line, the parking area basically drops right off. It, it's built out of a bank and we filled that whole area. So we, we don't have any landscaping in that area and there is no ability for it to park. Uh, uh, no ability for people to park there. The landscaping, if we were going to install something on there, would be on the slope. And it would be below the level of the parking lot, so it's from, from a, a shielding point of view, it offers nothing, and that parking lot is set back about two hundred feet from five and ten, so it really won't be visible. If you look at the current layout that we have now, there is area to the north. And I, I think I'd mentioned previously and certainly to Lucy is that Vesh is looking to, for another project in the very near future, which might include a, a new building in that area. So we, we don't want to plant any landscaping at the edge of that parking lot to use it as a, a buffer to start, stop people from parking in the field and then have to dig it up later. And so what we would suggest is that if the board would allow the project to go forward without any landscaping for this parking lot area, when that building comes in, we will have a for, formal landscaping plan around the building, around the any additional parking that we're gonna put in that area, and we'll, we'll take care of it at, at that point. I, I'm currently going and doing concept plans for Vesh to see what size building and, and how that layout will work, so that will be coming very soon. The other areas on there, I don't know if, I, I have the, the, the second review memo, I can, I can call it up and we can go through it. The, but before we do that, I just want to give a, just a brief overview of some of the changes that happened on the, on the site plan. We had designed the, the basin with two-to-one slopes because we were trying to keep it contained and not have it spread out because of the environmental areas around us. And the D E P requires three-to-one, we knew three-to-one was a requirement. And then we also looked at going forward in, in expanding and maybe using that basin for the future development. So we expanded the basin and we changed the slopes to three-to-one, and we've been fine-tuning the, the, the parameters of the basin, the water quality, the, the total suspended solids removal, the riprap correcting some details. So in general, most of the planned content that Berkshire Design has reviewed has been corrected or modified to address their comments both from the aspect of the bylaw and from, you know, just standard engineering and what it would prefer to see. And I'll let Lucy either confirm or deny that right now.
That, that's correct. All, all of our technical comments have been addressed. And so it is, what I sent out a letter this afternoon that, that eliminated all those because your Friday submission, you had addressed everything. Yes.
All right, so if I can, if, if the board would like to, I can call up Lucy's review that she put up today, and we can talk about some of the items that would just be some input.
Certainly, would Ms. Conley, would you be the one who would address those? Or would it be Mr. Furman or together?
Sure. You, I can bring it up, or John, you can bring it up, the letter.
Why, why don't you go ahead, Lucy? I'm, I'm trying to find the, our response letter that addressed some of those that you responded to.
So let's see, I will share. So this, we issued a letter on Friday with quite a few technical comments, but this morning I went through the plans that came in on Friday and the stormwater report, and it addressed all of those technical comments. So I rewrote this letter to just include quite a few comments that, that we would, that we, where we are suggesting the board, they want to, to to have, to, to comment on. This first comment is, is, is actually just procedural. It was just wanting to document that that the parking lot expansion met was under the maximum lot coverage, which, which it is. So I will, I will move on from that one. The second one is on parking lot design. And our comment was that the board may want to require a landscaping plan for the expanded parking lot, which is what John was just talking about. And under the same category with the lighting, because there, there was limited detail on, on the lighting plan in what we reviewed.
Is that what Mr. Furman has sent to us this afternoon? Is that what you were saying? You're sending us an updated lighting plan?
Goes to Amy.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
So if I could interrupt, so the landscaping plan would be the first item that we would be looking for some input from the board on, and whether you would require one or not, or allow us to delay that for the future projects. Would you prefer that we go through all the comments now and then discuss them later?
Well, we, we've not had an opportunity to really look at this. I think it, excuse me, may make more sense for the board to have an opportunity for our individual study. And then next, at the continuation, if we have additional questions, we would bring them forward then. On things, understanding such as with the lighting plan or discussing about the wetlands or whatnot, you may be doing some additional work between now and then, correct?
We're, we're pretty much done for any revisions. There, really what's remaining here is whatever the board would like us to address.
Well, although you still are needing a continuation, certainly for the lighting plan.
Absolutely.
And, right, so I mean, if I'm seeing a lot of nods with the board that we like to look at this individually.
From my point of view, the lighting plan is best addressed right alongside the parking lot plan. I understand your logic for the landscaping and for my, you know, from my perspective, that does I understand your logic for the landscaping and for my, you know, from my perspective, that does there that that does make some sense to wait. I see that to the next phase. But I think the lighting, I don't see the real logic and waiting for the next phase. I think it's best.
No, I wasn't asking for the lighting to wait for the next phase. I'm just waiting for the lighting designer to create the plan. You'll have that within a week or so.
Imagine even like in fifty four eighty one with our green development standards that you could and address that more specifically than what has been addressed so far.
We're actually further down the letter, we are further up the letter, we actually have responded to all of those.
I could bring up the letter where John addressed those. Would that would that make more sense?
I'm sorry, I couldn't understand you.
So so John also issued a letter where he responded to to these comments that I made.
I think this is it, Lucy.
Yes. And so this is, I brought that up now. This is also the letter where he responded to many technical comments, which are now all set. But but here is, for example, his response to the green green development standards.
So I think if all of the comments it appears, but if for certain, they could be consolidated into one final peer review letter that then we can examine with proper time prior to our next meeting.
Sure. If if that helps the board, what I can do is I can take Lucy's review letter she issued today and cut and paste our responses into that letter and reissue it back.
That would be very helpful. Thank you very much. So I believe then our next statement would be whether or not the applicant agrees to a continuation to our March sixth meeting.
Well, we do. Amy had sent me two continuations. I neglected to send you a continuation form for the last meeting. So I sent that tonight. That's waiting in her inbox. However, Amy, I sent you, if she's on the the line, I sent an email to her. For whatever reason, the form for continuing tonight's meeting to the sixth, I couldn't edit it. I couldn't do anything to it. I couldn't print it. I couldn't do anything with it. So I just emailed it back to her and said, can you kind of reset this and send it back? And I'll get it to her tomorrow.
Okay, and then we'll say.
I can do that.
With that, thank you very much, Amy. And Mr. Furman and Ms. Conley, thank you very much also. But we will see you March sixth. Hopefully a slightly warmer evening.
That is hopeful.
Okay, and then our I don't believe we have to vote. Thank you. Good. So the now we will open another public hearing on our Sunny Days establishment applications. And the Andrea is reading the public hearing notice.
Notice is hereby given that the Deerfield Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, February sixth, twenty twenty three, seven P M. An applications filed by Sunny Days Inc. For site plan review, special permit and stormwater management review for property located at Greenfield Road, map one fifty nine, lot fourteen, to construct three new cannabis-related buildings, including a five thousand square foot test laboratory, twenty two, twenty six thousand seven hundred five square foot indoor cultivation facility, three thousand five hundred thirty nine square foot dispensary, associated parking for each building, ancillary landscape improvements, lighting, stormwater management and utility improvements pursuant to zoning bylaws, chapter one seventy nine and chapter one fifty five. Application documents available for review in foyer of municipal offices or online at www.deerfieldmass deerfieldma.us in the calendar event.
Thank you, Andrew. So similar to what we've done before, let Mr. Furman give a a narrative overview of this project. And then most likely, because it is well, not most likely, because it is quite a detailed project. I'm anticipating we will be having peer review and a continuation also, but Mr. Furman.
Thank you. Again, I'm John Furman. I am the office manager for VHB in Springfield. And with me tonight, you should see, let's see, where is he? My screen is in the upper right, upper right corner, Ken Bocloin, who is the one of the principals for for Sunny Days. So what we thought we'd do tonight is I'd give a brief presentation of kind of like technical piece in the site layout. I understand the board would like us to keep it brief. So but I think Ken would like to kind of give an overview of the organization and the project itself and and kind of like what he's about. So I'd like to turn it over to Ken for a minute.
Thanks, John. So the proposal tonight is for this cannabis campus, we call it. There's multiple buildings relating to cannabis in a single site. We're we're setting it up sort of like a campus. So there's roads throughout some wooded property. And, you know, we have a pretty large piece, twenty eight acres. We'll be using about five acres of that. So this, you know, John Furman will, you know, be presenting the civil drawing that we've worked on. We've completed all our construction drawings for this process. And we're looking forward to, you know, getting the getting the review done and get in front of the planning board and discussing any questions that you might have about the property.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Ken. If it's possible to share my screen, I'd like to just blast up the site plans for a moment and run through them quickly. All right. So let me close this. Hopefully you're seeing our site plan set. And this is generally the the cover sheet. I'll just blast through this, our general notes. This is the plan that I think will actually provide the best overview of the site. And I'll just start with the layout. For for those that may not know where we are, the property just to the south of us is adjacent to Route one sixteen, and that's kind of a small little greenhouse greenhouse farm stand property. And we are the the two parcels next to it. This parcel here is the main parcel that we are planning to do most of our work on. And you'll see the property line here for the second parcel, which we are not touching. The site access location is dictated for us by Mass DOT. This is a limited access highway, and this break in access, which you can kind of see these two lines, is already permitted by Mass DOT. So our driveway needs to fall within there. When you look at the site, it kind of a close up like this, there are a number of wetland features that we have to work around. So you can see there's a perennial stream kind of running, I believe, in a in a westerly direction comes through this culvert, and that has a two hundred foot buffer zone associated with it. There's a well-in feature here. Then there's another one kind of connects to this. And then there's another one that connects to that coming from the north, all flowing south into a large, this large stream, and then it heads underneath Route one sixteen, one sixteen. When we had a previous meeting on this site, one of the butters from the from the south had commented regarding the water that this property already experiences, and was concerned what this would do. So Berkshire Design will will review all of the the stormwater management pieces. But we have eight detention basins, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. And we have eight because we have shallow groundwater here. And what we need to do is maintain distance between that groundwater and the bottom of these basins by DEP requirement. So our, we briefly, we set a design point at the end of our property here where this perennial stream leaves and starts to go under one sixteen. And we modeled it under existing conditions, and then we modeled it under proposed conditions. And what we are proposing is less flow at that point than currently exists. So, you know, we are confident we're going to have some fine tuning of this system to do. And we'll work that out with Berkshire Design as we we go forward. The buildings that Ken had mentioned, the one most south is the third-party testing. The one in the middle here is a dispensary building. And the one in the back here is a cultivation building. Potentially, there may be a third phase or a second phase, rather, in the back here where we have upland area, and that would include another wetland crossing. We are not considering that at this time. The application includes all of the information that the bylaw requires for the special permit from the marijuana perspective. It has all the the certified statements, copies of licenses, if they're available, operating plans, odor plans, waste plan. Everything is included in there. So there's a lot of reading that the board will do to get themselves up to speed. From a parking perspective, we have parking basically isolated into three parking spaces. What is not shown on here, which the next time we do an update, we will add, are some electric vehicle charging stations. We had the site walk for Vesh after we were, after we had submitted this plan, and we understood how important it was for the the board to have electrical charging stations. So I believe we have two for the testing, one for the testing lab and two for the the cultivation building back here, and we'll we'll show those on on the next update. From a sewer perspective, let's just back up a bit. From a utility perspective, there are basically no utilities in this area of Deerfield. The water line is about a thousand feet south at one sixteen. So we have an application with Mass DOT to extend the water line. We're going to, we plan to directionally drill it under Route five and ten at the fire station, connect it and run it in the shoulder, back to the driveway and then into the site. There is a sewer line here. In order to connect to that, we'll have two pump stations, one of them in the back, which will pump to a station in front. These two buildings will gravity flow to that, and then this pump station will lift all the sewage into the into the the station. There's no electricity here. So we've met with EverSource, and we walked the site. They'll be extending poles along five and ten. It'll cross somewhere in this area. But again, we're starting actually further past the fire station, running them on this side, crossing over, and then bringing them overhead into the site. So that is generally a an overview of of the project. We have the notice of intent underway, so we'll be filing with the Conservation Commission in a in a short bit. One of the items that I learned today, which will result in a update to the plans, is that this detention basin here meets the area requirement for development in the riparian zone of the of that perennial stream. But because it's over five thousand square feet, would require an extensive wildlife study. And given this time of year, we really isn't the time to do one. So we're looking at a concept right now where this basin goes away. We regrade this slightly, and then we put that basin over here. So it'll be a compensating change. The area of here will be the area here, and we'll have that done and updated by the time the peer reviewer starts this. And in general, from a traffic perspect perspective, this is the traffic study that that we submitted. It's a full traffic study. I usually go down to this table here, which is table two. And this is basically the information taken from the Institute of Transportation Engineers for marijuana. The the eleventh edition has, the tenth edition started, and the eleven edition edition has refined the information available for marijuana. So these are our projected peak hour increases. So on the weekday morning, the peak hour is expected to generate thirty three new trips entering the site and twenty two exiting. The weekday evening is expected to generate sixty six trips entering and eighty exiting. These are peak hours, just want to remind you. And on the weekday, I'm sorry, on the Saturday midday, sixty two entering and sixty three exiting. So this site is not a heavy traffic generator. And given the the capacity of Route five and ten, we are not anticipating any issues at all. I'm sure the board has heard in the past how dispensaries and retail, when they've opened up, the opening day has been a nightmare. There's been traffic jams and issues for communities. That was prevalent in Northampton when Insa first opened up. And they, it was the first one in the state, and there are people from other states were coming. We've been involved in marijuana projects across many communities in Massachusetts. And what we are seeing is that those opening days influx of heavy traffic don't exist anymore because there's so many marijuana retail facilities existing right now. They, there's just so many to choose from, like package stores. We're just not getting that influx. There will be a minor increase over these numbers, but it's nothing compared to what the the first days of the 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 first ones in the state were. So in general, that's that is our presentation. I can stop sharing and answer any questions that the board may have.
Hi, this is Kathy Richa. I do have a question. You have your study location map. It shows a site ninety one, five and ten, Vesh up to the north. Do you have an indication on there where the DOT has determined the driveway in to your?
Yeah, so it it's not in the study, but if you look at the site plans and you go to the survey, survey starts right here. You go go to the I guess this would be the third page of the survey. And you'll see access allowed state highway layout number seventy eighty, and that's exactly where our driveway is.
So so can you just, generally speaking, show the sort of Google Earth site and give a estimate of where that is in location to say the fire department, treehouse, Vesh, and that intersection of one sixteen and five and ten and five. I'm trying to just get a sense of where it is off of five and ten.
Yep. It's it's without even going to Google Earth, I can tell you it's generally about a thousand feet because that's as long as the water main is. But let me go to Google Earth.
It's it's eleven hundred feet from the corner of one sixteen and the five ten.
Okay, let me get you a good view here.
Yeah.
So this is, this is the fire station. This is one sixteen, and there's that farm stand. So let me see if I can move this.
It's just south of the opening of the trees and the Treehouse Brewery.
So it's right about there.
Okay.
It's a little bit farther, John.
It's a little bit farther?
It's just a little bit farther. Yeah, it's right around there where you had that cursor.
Oh, right about here.
Yeah, it's right around there. Yep.
Okay.
It's just south of the the field opening there in front of Treehouse Brewery.
If if you were going to go to the site and wanted to see that, the best the best gauge of it is this culvert.
Okay.
You can see this culvert from the roadway, and that's at station fifty one, and the driveway is at fifty five. So it's about four hundred feet past driveway. That'll get you to the edge of it.
So the the other good landmark, too, if you're driving by anyone on the board and just trying to figure it out. So right there to the right of the driveway, there's an old trestle crossing in the train tracks, because there's the old trolley tracks right there. That trestle crossing is big granite stones, and you can see that pretty easy. And we're just about fifty to seventy five feet south of there.
I have another question, too, if you don't mind. So you stated that it's twenty eight acres and you're using about five of them. So what will happen with the rest, the twenty three?
We'll be leaving the rest of the. We'll be leaving the rest of the property, um, as is treed. Won't be disturbing any of it. We'll be preserve- preserving the property the rest of it.
Alright.
I have a question, Emily Gaylord. Um. Can you just clarify, you said because of the time of year, there couldn't be a comprehensive wildlife study. Can you just elaborate on that a little bit? And, and what that means?
Sure, I, I mean, most uh, animals that you would look at in a wildlife study are hibernating right now. And the wa- purpose of the wildlife study is to determine wildlife, its habitat and uh. Uh, uh, seeing what impact this project may have uh, on that. Um, if we did a wildlife study now in this time of year, the DEP would not accept it because everything's frozen. Everything's hibernating. Our wildlife study would just say that there, there's, there's no wildlife. Cause there's none visible this time of year.
So are you just going to be doing the wildlife study at a later date? Is that the plan?
No, we're not going to be doing a wildlife study. So there's triggers uh, that, that require the wildlife study. And one of that trigger is development in the riverfront area uh, that exceeds five thousand square feet. Uh, the riverfront area and the purpose of that is to protect this river, this perennial stream. So by moving this basin out of the uh, the riverfront area, the trigger for requiring that study goes away.
Okay, thank you. That was, that was the piece that I needed. And then I have one more question, if that's okay. Um, you mentioned EverSource is going to need to bring poles in. Do you know how many and at what frequency there's going to be new poles?
Uh, about a hundred and seventy-five feet in between the poles on the five-ten. And, and, and then there'll be less of a distance as they come onto our property. Do you know exactly how many, John?
I don't, uh, I never got a concept from them. But you know, if we, if we're twelve hundred feet and let's just round it out to uh, you know, every two hundred feet, that's uh, that's six poles.
Okay.
Um. Generally in that area.
The town has certainly been working with EverSource or trying to ask EverSource for buried, buried lines if possible. So if that is something that you could respectfully acquire of them. That would be very appreciated.
So, so in this situation, I worked extensively with EverSource. Um, we walked this property over and over again. We looked from the north, we looked from the south. Um, we had multiple meetings out there with EverSource. Um, trying to get uh. Power lines underground in this area is much more of a disturbance than it would be to just put the poles in. Um, we, we would have to, you know, go along the edge of the road where there, where there's wetlands, we'd have to be st- disturbing wetlands. Um, with the poles, much easier, they can just put a few poles cross. And they won't even interfere with the wetlands, they can stay away from them. Um, we would actually cross the five-ten at a diagonal. Um, so it would span the wetlands and not get anywhere near it. Um, so I think, I think what we're doing, we, we've looked, we wanted to go underground. Um, but truthfully, this is a much more sensible and realistic way to get power in there without disturbing the land.
The poles would be on which side of the street, the side that the driveway is on or the opposite?
So they would go up, up to, from the firehouse up to about where he is right there. And then they would cut across diagonally to get away from all that wetlands and crossing, they would span it and stay away from it. Then there would be like one or two more poles up to the driveway and then we would go into our property.
So EverSource says that it has to have fifteen feet of clearance of trees on both sides of a pole. Does that mean all those beautiful trees that are on five and ten are going to come down?
No, so actually, if you drive up there and take a look, the trees are already cut down on the. Uh, that would be the east side of five by the firehouse going all the way up to where we are and that's why we picked it, because those trees are cleaned out. Um, and then as you cut across diagonally onto uh, right there, that's all just open space right there. There's, I don't know, thirty-something feet from the road, it's all clear, just grass.
Yeah, and Ken is, Ken is, is correct. When we met with EverSource. We looked at the clearing as well and this was the, the route that made the most sense from the wetlands, uh, disturbance and, and the clearing. There was, I think, one or two trees right as soon as you got past the wood line. Uh, of the fire station, but uh, there's, there was trimming, but for the most part, this was wide open enough that we didn't need to do anything.
Will we be able to have a site visit?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
So.
We've had, we've had many, so we're more, we're more than happy to walk with you out there.
We, 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 we will caution you that there is no great access into the site now. This plan looks awesome, that it has a nice paved road, but you've got to have your billy goat shoes on to get in there. Uh, you got to go down a slope, back up over the trestle, through a wetlands and then once you get into here. It gets fairly flat, but you do have wetland crossing, so it's not an easy walk.
I actually have one more question.
We will um, schedule that, Amy can work with us on scheduling that.
Hi, this is Kathy Richa, I just have another question. So there's a water plan and a waste plan. Is there an exhaust plan too? With the cultivation and that sort of particulate dust?
So I can help you with that. So right now, we're building, I, I have another company. We build large-scale facilities for cannabis. Um, manufacturers across the country. Right now, we're building four places and uh, for clients in Massachusetts. Um, I picked this property for a certain reason. Um, one of them is we have a highway on both sides. We have ninety-one to the west, we have the five-ten to the right. And we're surrounded by wetlands. Um, we have, you know, a farm stand through wetlands to the south and then. Through a bunch of property wooded trees, we have Vesh to the north. So as far as uh, exhaust goes, these facilities are extremely high-tech. Uh, they're extremely energy efficient. We build the most energy efficient facilities in the industry right now. Um, there will, all the, all the air is treated before it leaves the building. Um, so you won't be smelling any, you know, any smell outside the building. Although the rule says that you can't smell it anywhere's on the boundary line. Um, we are far from the boundary line in all directions. Um, so, so we, not only will we have. You know, a very good air purification system in our cultivation building, which, you know, consists of hydroxyl machines. I'm not sure if you know what they are, but they encapsulate it um, and, and, and get rid of the smell before it gets, you know, purged outside. Um, and then of course, we're, we're with, well within the laws of keeping a smell away from our boundary lines.
So this, so the mediation is the location, the farmlands, the high-tech, energy-efficient air. It's, it's treated, I don't, I don't know what the definition of treated is, but um. That sort of loose particulate does not make its way out of the building, it's treated?
Yeah, yeah, it's all filtered with carbon filters, so nothing leaves the building. No smell, no particulates.
Okay.
May, may I ask, do you have a facility in Massachusetts that already exists? That would be comparable that we could look at?
We have one, I don't know if the client's going to let you look at it. We're building a twenty. Uh, almost a fifty thousand square foot facility in Amesbury right now, um, for CNA stores, they're a veteran-owned company. Um, and we're building a few other ones. So yes, we do have facilities in Massachusetts right now.
Um, a number of us went to Treehouse's other, another facility to take a look to see what they were doing. So this might be useful to us.
Hmm. We can, we can, we can discuss it with the owner, I can't guarantee he'll let you in. Um. These people are pretty tight with their technology, um, for what we're doing, but I'll ask for sure.
Thank you.
I just have one more curiosity question. You said you're building it to be high-tech and energy-efficient. Are you pursuing any high-performance building standards?
Uh, we're way beyond the building performance standards.
Well, I mean, are you going to be pursuing a certification? Or something like that?
No, we're not go- we're not going to have a lead certification, but. Um, there is a thing called the Cannabis Power Score, um, that's run by the state in, in Massachusetts, the CCC. Um, they come in, they determine how much energy you're using, how much water you're using. Um, how efficient you are and then you, they give you a power score. Um, we are fully shooting to top that list. Um, the most efficient facility in Massachusetts.
Thank you.
We, we, we could, we could get into some technology. Um, we do things that no one else does. Um, we recapture all the waste heat. If, if you know about electrical components, doesn't matter whether it's your refrigerator, your stove, anything. It's, it's, it's only just so efficient. They're all less than fifty percent efficient, so fifty percent of your energy is just getting burned. Um, we capture all that waste heat and that waste energy and we reuse it in our building. Um, highly efficient. Um, you know, much, much more efficient than anything else you're seeing out there on the market. We're a hydronic system, so we push, you know, we push water instead of hot air, so it's much, you know, much uh, more efficient.
Thank you. Other, other questions, we certainly.
Uh, so I, I have another question. Um, the O'Reilly Talbot and, and O'Con um, reports. Talks about concerns about compaction of soil and. The structure of the soil and whether it can support the weight of buildings and floors, et cetera. Are you concerned about that?
No, we've already done all our tests, we've done all our geo tests. I mean, we've been working on this project and been held up by the town for two years. Um, we started almost two years ago doing our geo testing, which means we went in there, we drilled it, um, I was there with them. Uh, we drilled all the sites and, and the, the, this property will easily hold the weight of these buildings. They're not very heavy, it's not uh, extreme industrial like maybe Yankee Candle or somebody with these giant machines in there. Um, so yeah, this, we're very confident that this is uh, from the tests that we got, that this property is fine.
And uh, just as a, as a follow-up to that, so the purpose of doing the, the geotechnical report is to actually. Get their opinion on, on the soils. So there, uh, the geotechnical engineer has two uh, tasks on a geotechnical report. First is doing the borings and telling us what's wrong. And then the latter part of the report gives recommendations for building. And how to address what they feel is wrong. So if you look later in that report. It gives us the recommendations for foundation designs, so that the building will be able to uh. Withstand uh, and not have uh, differential settlement or any other issues.
So uh, they talk about the, about fill and how much, they don't say how much fill, they say that you will need fill. Do you anticipate needing a lot of fill for this, for these buildings?
I can, I can answer that. So the reason that they put that statement in there is because they don't have a site plan yet, when they, when they do that. So uh, uh, similar to what we did at, at Vesh, I'll, I'll give you uh, some examples here. So this is the. Actually, I think I have to go to the grading plan here. Yeah, so let me uh, so go to the grading plan here. So uh, uh, find a elevation uh, with a. So this is elevation two oh six right here. And if you follow that through the site, the proposed elevation here is two oh seven. So there will be a foot of fill in that area. This is also two oh six and this building is set at two oh eight, so there's two feet here. Um, this elevation here is, it doesn't have one on it. You'll find another one, maybe I'll go over to here.
It's between one and two feet of.
Yeah, so, so this elevation back here where the cultivation building is, is two oh eight, let me just go to the next sheet. All right, there is two oh eight and the finished floor is two ten. So in general, we're about a foot to two foot of fill. Across any area that we're developing.
Other questions at this point, I mean, I think we will be requesting um. Peer review for stormwater, site plan review, special permit. So that will certainly give us more opportunity, yes. Enjoy your answers. Alright, well then, um, I think, um, I know that the town staffing in particular has been good with. Uh, trying to secure a pure review. Uh. Applicants and understand that the applicant that we received is someone that you are supportive of.
Yeah, uh, you know, we were, we were encouraging Berkshire Design to, to submit on this as well. As you can see, the, the, the relationship between uh, Berkshire and DHB was pretty good on Vesh. We worked things out in advance, so I'd like to continue that to this project.
We're working within quite a bit on a number of our projects. Um, so um, then we would be. I believe they, they have said that they should be able to have their peer review report in time for our March sixth meeting. If that's acceptable for you for a continuation date.
It is.
Okay.
And Ken is nodding as well, so.
Excellent, so we'll have our signatures on that.
Yeah.
Um, we will be continuing this public hearing to March third, March sixth.
Very good.
Very much, this was um, just a good level of detail and overview for us today, so I really appreciate that. Just second, one more question from Denise.
Emily, do we want to set up a time for a site, you know, site review?
I think, I think the site is at Amy, maybe you can send out a doodle.
Okay, that sounds good.
And we can.
Well, i- if, uh, i- is the board uh, interested in actually going into the site a little bit?
With our uh, frog boots, as you said.
What I, what I will try to do is uh, we have this technology where uh, you know, the map program on your phone. Uh, we can superimpose the proposed development on that map program. So as you walk through the site, you're the blue dot and then you can get approximately where the buildings are. I'll try and get that set up for that meeting, so we can have that technology when we walk out there. So you won't just be kind of walking in the woods and kind of guessing where things are.
Alright, well, Amy can check with you to begin with, as to when you might be available and then she'll check with us.
Very good.
Very good, alright.
And when is the Conservation Commission um, discussion?
Uh, we haven't filed it yet, we're, we're still working on the notice of intent. Uh, their, their next meeting uh, that we can actually attend is March sixteenth, I believe. Uh, we're, we're too late to submit for the February meeting. So we will be submitting somewhere around March first and that'll get us on that uh, March sixteenth agenda, I believe it is.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you very much, really appreciate it.
Alright, pleasure seeing you all tonight, stay warm.
Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Goodnight.
Alright. Uh, um, back on our agenda, coming and going and lots of.
Have you any um, people attending who want, want to make any kind of comment?
Oh, well, um, certainly, thank you. Andrea is wondering if there's any comments from public who are. Uh, attending, otherwise, I mean, I think next week will, or next meeting will be a good opportunity for that. No, okay. Alright. Um, other visits not reasonably anticipated. Ms. Mason brought forward a question for discussion.
Yeah, uh, we've been meeting, we've been meeting at seven o'clock. I know we changed the meeting time tonight at six-thirty. Because our, that's when our attorney was available, but I'm questioning the rest of the planning board. I think we can make the decision as to when we start meeting, so I'm proposing to start earlier. And I just wanted to hear what others have to say.
When do you eat dinner?
I agree.
I mean, earlier works for me.
It's, it's, it's once a month. We meet once a month, I think we can have a snack before the meeting or eat afterwards.
If one doesn't have a three-year-old with them.
I, I just have to, I do work till six-thirty. So, and I'm sure Patrick has those moments too, so, but I don't work on Mondays anymore.
Well, that's in my future, I'm a year, but it's, it's fine, I can organize around it, but it is.
I can do that.
Well, is that difficult then for two of us?
Um, I can make it work. I was a little delayed this evening because of a level ten meltdown. From a toddler who didn't want me to leave, uh, but I can, I can make it work for planning, for Deerfield.
Well, my cats didn't want me to leave either, but that, they dealt with it, so.
Good cat tantrum over what uh, what I endured on my way here.
Okay, so, so do we hear a proposal, at what time? Is six, do we want to start six-thirties?
Oh, yeah, sooner than six-thirty.
Six-thirty. Give that a shot?
Still, we're still looking at.
I mean, six would work, if, if I'm not, if I'm, six is fine too.
I mean, six would work. If, if I'm not, if I'm, six is fine too. I- if I'm gonna get out of it, I gotta get out of all of it. So it's not like.
Right, at that point, same.
Right, yeah. So if we want to start at six, I'm not, I'm not ever. I just have to organize around.
I mean, the meetings are typically two hours long, so we would be finishing at eight o'clock. It's eight-twenty now.
Thirty. Starting at six.
It depends. I mean, most of, most of them are just two hours.
In terms of, I can't, I, I am not going to be able to be here the next week, so.
You're right.
At all. At all. I'm flying, I'm flying at that, exactly that time.
How about I propose, we, we do this for a few months. If it, if it's an undue hardship on anyone, we can revisit it.
At six-thirty.
Yeah, and, but we have to make sure that we talk to Amy and that when we have public hearings that we post, so we don't, yeah.
Um, okay, that's good. Uh, and as Andrea just mentioned, she's not going to be able to come to our next meeting. So a reminder to the planning board that, um, in terms of our public hearings, uh, we do have a state requirement uh, that we must all attend all of the public hearing meetings. Otherwise we can't vote. Except for we can sign a statement that we have reviewed the, the tape of the meeting and that we are fully informed. So, um, that holds for any.
It's pretty easy. You can just watch it on YouTube.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
How quickly thereafter the meeting, is it, is it posted to you too?
Usually the next day. Even at the most, two days later.
Yeah, Chris, Chris posts them the next day that they are up very quickly.
Okay. All right, um. Do we have any other public moments? Uh, and we did reports already. Uh, Amy, did we, did you hear back from our, our large-scale sold folks about their annual reports to us?
Uh, so the one on Setright Road, it, it was a bit of, um, uh, some detective work to find out, you know, who's operating it now and find the right person, which I eventually did. Um, I contacted her last week. Um, and she was completely unaware that they need to do this. Uh, I sent her a sample report from the other uh, facility, which she had asked for. Um, and I, I think they may. I asked her to write a letter to us if they thought they needed more time.
Where, where are they out of? Who, who has that? Who's has control of that?
So that one is, uh, Next Amp owns that.
Is it in Virginia? Is that, or they sold it out?
Oh, I don't know exactly where they're based out of. Um, but so they, they are aware. The other one I have contacted many times. They are fully aware, um, that the due date is February fifteenth, so.
Uh, thank you. And how about Amber Gardens?
I'm sorry?
Amber Gardens, their monthly report.
I have not, I have not heard from them. Uh, I can contact them and ask them to send us the report that they're supposed to send us.
Right, they were the ones who volunteered that they would send us a monthly report. So if, uh, if you need anything more strongly worded, it is rather disturbing that you have to, uh, try to do this. This should not be your responsibility, it should be theirs.
Okay.
So. Thank you.
All right, we'll take care of that.
Thank you. We'll hopefully take care of it for you. Thank you, Amy.
Sure.
Um, so our next meeting, as we've been saying often online, is, um, March sixth. Um, there has been some, uh, discussion I've been hearing from select board. Um, but annual time meeting may be delayed a little bit beyond the usual, I don't know, April or whatever.
May first.
Right. So. Hold your breath on that one. And, um, otherwise, could I initiate a motion to adjourn?
I moved that we adjourned.
I second.
I heard that you guys stayed forever and ever last meeting. I wasn't here. How did you adjourn? How did that happen?
Yeah.
I mean, you must have been so sad.
All right.
Hi.
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 Yes. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you too.